I'm wrong, please stop me because I wasn't, you know, involved last week. There's no doubt, we've got to get a handle on this and this looks like a good start. My question is, if you look on page 159 in the city ordinances there, section 6-5-4, 6-5-5, it spells out how we handle delinquent bills. Now, this says for a large amount past due bills, does that, how does that work with, if it was just a small amount, you know, does anybody, I guess, legally look at that? Or is nobody doing it? I guess what I'm saying, if we do this, it needs to be so it can't be challenged legally.
I would say that that would be tend to do, definitely be in touch with the, get in touch with the city attorney, make sure that what we're doing is legal. I would include that, I know, yeah, but I would include we'd let this, we'd let this go for so long that, and it does read in there, just past-
For a large amount past due.
And then we started past due amounts by two months.
Well, I take that to mean if, if somebody is in past due for six months, or is that, I look at that wrong, or?
Now, what that means is the past due amount up to $200 will divide the past due amount by two months, and they have to pay it off within two months.
But what I'm talking about, these large amounts, these are things that have bailed up over-
Yes.
Months.
Yes.
This is not just somebody that fell behind last month.
Just last month, no.
Okay.
But our ordinance book does state-
It does say that.
And we need to start doing what you said, and if somebody falls a second month behind, we need to send a notice out, we need to, we need to start following the ordinance book, the way it reads.
And I just, what I'm curious is, that this doesn't come in conflict with what we got.
In the past, I know, talking with the attorneys, they said as long as we treat everybody exactly the same, which I guess this would do that, there's no legal issues. If you start playing favoritism, something like that, then that's where you run into trouble.
No, I'd say my concern is that when we start it, you know, we're able to carry it out without any problems, that's my only concern. That, you know, if somebody doesn't try to use some kind of an alibi on us here, without paying their due responsibilities.
If you're changing your ordinance, you need to amend your ordinance and have your three legal readings, if you're changing the way your ordinance reads.
I think we're just doing a resolution for these large amounts.
How to collect large amounts that are past due-
Yeah.
That have been neglected.
Then are you adding to your ordinances?
I think one may be added, that's the way I'm saying.
Then you have to amend if you do amend.
There would be an amendment.
If you're changing the way you do it.
Well, what's in the ordinance book is the way it's supposed to be every day, all day long. This is for people who have large amounts past due, either be for, for whatever reason, doesn't matter what the reason is, they owe it, they need to pay it, they need to make arrangements to do that. What's in the ordinance book is what's supposed to happen every month to everyone.
Right.
So if we're really not changing that, that is-
So you're adding to the process of people paying, right?
Just some people, I know that, I know that doesn't sound good.
It's just to get rid of the debt right now.
Just to get rid of the debt.
Yeah, we've got to collect what's out.
Once that's done, it goes back the way it's supposed to be done.
And being, I, since I wasn't here last time, I'm not trying to stop the process or anything, I just, my concern is we don't get in trouble when we start doing this and-
Something I dreamed just brought up is this-
Would it help if I read what we have on here?
No, I'm just saying, anytime you amend, anytime you change anything you have in your ordinance book and add something to it, it's in the ordinance amendment. Somebody could contest that.
We're not changing an ordinance.
Okay.
No, we're, that's, that's still staying.
According to the League of Cities, as long as we do it, and according to the attorney, as long as we do it the same for everybody, it doesn't have to be amendment to the budget, or the-
Ordinance.
Ordinance. You can do this as a temporary thing to get everybody back to where they're supposed to be, or cut them off, and then you can, you go back to the way it was. He said it's not an amendment to the ordinance.
You already talked to your city attorney about it?
We've already talked to the League of Cities too.
As long as the League of Cities and the city attorney are in accordance, are you good then, Bob?
If it's, you know, like I say, just so when we start this, we can continue with it to where it gets solved, that's all I'm concerned.
How many are past due and have been past due on a payment plan, but aren't following the payment plan that have not been shut off?
This will take care of that, Charles.
I don't know if they've been shut off over the last several years.
That's what, that's what this ordinance is doing, we're putting it in place to-
We're not, we're not-
Or, sorry, resolution.
Charles, this resolution states, "The customer will make monthly payments of the portion of the past due bill according to the formula that we have above, plus the amount of their current utility bill. And if the customer misses the required payment, water service will be discontinued after 10 days. To resume service, the bill must be paid in full and will be subject to a reconnection fee. The customer will continue to pay past due amounts until the bill is paid off."
And that's why this was put in place, because of all those-
Okay, well, if that's good, and we can start following it-
Yep.
Then this will be cleared up in six months. You'll get the ones that aren't paying out, maybe shut a couple people off, maybe they'll realize-
Actually, it goes out for 12 months, Charles.
Yes, 12 months is the longest, the largest amount.
Either way, it'll be resolved.
It'll be resolved within a year, a little bit huge, really big ones, within a year or longer.
I think Bob's got a legitimate point, though, I think you need to talk to your lawyer just to make sure that there's no issues, and you could pass it with that contingency on your, on your-
I think they've already consulted, I guess, Jason and Donna just said that.
I'm good with it, I think the lawyer's okay.
Has the lawyer been consulted?
It didn't sound like the lawyer was consulted, it sounded like we were going on what they've said in the past about things, I'm not sure that's how we need to move the city forward.
Heather was asked about it, I think about two years ago.
But it hasn't been about this particular-
Agreed, it's the same, it's-
The same agreement.
It doesn't matter, she said it does not matter on the agreement, as long as everybody's treated the same way. If you're treating somebody this way and treating somebody else this way, that's where you get in trouble.
My guess is, you're gonna have a lot of people don't want to pay money, so you better make sure-
They're gonna get shut off.
They're gonna look funny.
Yeah.
They'll have to pay that in a while, but.
How do you know everybody's being treated right, because I think, so, people there, nobody knows who's delinquent or not, because that's illegal, so, I mean.
Well, but, but stay, well, the, the names can't go out, I mean-
I know who's delinquent, I just can't tell.
Yeah.
The names can't go out.
So, but the people who are recently-
So, has, has the League of Cities been called like this week, or recently about this deal? Because as far as I'm concerned, if somebody up there says they're good, what, something's gotta get done, I don't want to see this one table. I mean, this, this is a hot topic.
Okay. But you could, you could amend your motion and pass it with a contingency.
Let's get down to this.
But, but to clarify again, they're gonna sign an agreement that, and, okay, this, this has again been discussed, they will sign an agreement-
They need to do that.
That simply says, and I like what you said, if I miss a payment, including my current bill, and I know your formula, you're gonna divide it up on the big ones by 12, and it'll be that much, you save $2,400, it'll be another 200 each month, plus a current bill, and if they don't pay that, they will be shut off and a full amount of everything they would send, and then it'll be turned back on, right?
Plus a reconnection.
Plus a reconnection, okay.
So do you have something in there that if they refuse to sign the agreement, it's immediate, you within 10 days?
We should have one.
That needs to be included in that.
Yeah.
Do you have one in there?
I would, yeah, yeah, if we're gonna amend the motion, I would like to amend that 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 is included, that if they refuse to sign agreement, it's immediate shut off. And I will amend my motion to pass this resolution as long as it's checked out with Heather and the League of Cities. Better to double check than to have them come back, something come back and bite us, right?
We've gone so long, once a week or so, it's gonna matter now to get it correct or do it properly.
Well, probably they'll start until the first of the month anyway.
Okay.
Because there has to be time to generate letters, and each letter's gonna be different.
Right.
And get them mailed out.
It's gonna be the same minus the, or-
That would be good.
The amount and the name will be different.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the letters will be exactly the same.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to stir up the hornets next, but-
You didn't, I'd rather have all of it in there or miss something.
One other thing too, Donna, that might need to be on the letters too, is give them a deadline to respond.
That they have such a certain time to get back to city.
You know, you've got 10 days to come to city hall and make these arrangements, or-
Or, if that you want.
Yeah, but I mean, we hadn't mentioned that in the-
That's true.
Notification, it's on my scribble note in there, but.
And, and our ordinances, I think they say by mail, but I'm thinking these need to go by registered or certified, where somebody has to sign for them.
I wouldn't.
And if they don't sign, we need to find out their documents, or they're really gone, or what's, you know.
So you put them in the hands.
Put them in the hands.
But that again gets us to what if they don't sign for it, what if they refuse the letter, what if they don't?
Then you've got documentation, that we get documentation-
Documentation that we sign, okay.
No, certified or the card back, that way, you get the card back, either way.
That's true.
Certified, yeah.
Yeah.
It costs a little more, but in this situation, I think it's money well spent.
For the money that it'll be bringing in, it's money well spent.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any thoughts about it? If we're gonna, if we're going to have contingencies, let's get them all down here now.
No, I just still say it should be an ordinance amendment, if you're changing your-
Before I do anything, I'll personally call the league and-
Who did you talk to, Jason, about, up there, about that, do you know?
Was it Mickey?
Yeah.
Mickey Schill.
Mickey or Mark, Mickey?
Mickey.
I mean, there's no doubt we have to get everybody to do process equally, there's, that's a given. That's a good way to get yourself in a lot of trouble if you don't, I shouldn't say yourself, get the city in trouble.
Okay, you only do your motion-
I'd like to make my motion again with-
You got to, you put the resolution number-
Resolution number 17-8-18, that we passed. The past due payment schedule, payment plan, with the contingencies that were included and amendments that were included this evening, do I need to read all of them?
No.
No? That we, we just discussed and agreed upon tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor, carry. Now, we've got a little issue here, with what we were finding on doing, is hiring part-time help, there's not a deputy clerk.
It should be a part-time position.
Yeah, and, but I don't think we're gonna do much, because we've got it down here.
Needs to be worked differently.
I think we're gonna have to pay-
Table that until the September meeting?
Yes.
Okay, until the regular September session.
We go that one.
I need a motion that takes-
A motion that we table that to the regular September session.
Do we have a clerk now, and she's still working, two hours?
Two days a week.
Two days, how long will that last, do we know?
Ten days and a quarter.
So, four weeks.
Why hasn't she been made?
Before we make that decision.
My motion was made by Slapper, table the clerk position as we've got written up for the next meeting, and I need a second.
I'll second that.
Secured by Chisholm to table this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose, only because I think it should be sent in the next meeting.
I kinda agree with that, because you don't know when that, or anyone's gonna leave, and is Donna gonna continue to, what about hiring a permanent clerk? You gonna wait another month, or you consider doing that?
Okay, I'd need more than that.
Donna, are you okay with running things until that happens?
No.
When Roberta resigned, when Roberta resigned, what date, what was Roberta's resignation date?
I'll tell ya. I think May, I believe, April, right after the election.
The day after.
And she left on May 3rd, what?
When was, Mary, the July meeting?
Uh, yeah.
So unfortunately, it's not a best case scenario, but we went without, and it's, it's not a best case scenario, it's a bad scenario, but we went eight weeks without one before.
She's, she's-
Donna stepped in for that entire-
Right, and Donna stepped in now. Or you have to.
I'll go ahead and do what I can, we can't, nobody else can do the water bills right now, simply because you have to be trained by Data Technology, who is the company that our water program comes from. If you are not trained by Data Technology and you have a problem, they won't help you.
How much does that cost to do the training?
The training's $1,100.
$1,100?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't, they did that free when they set, I set all that up, and they came out and did that free because-
They don't do it free now.
They're not free anymore.
Because they pay, I think we, when they trained me, we paid.
It was 800 back then, I think.
Well, I mean, that's when, that's when we bought the program.
Yeah, I understand, but when they trained me, what, about six years ago now, we paid them.
And then, of course.
If you have a, if the person doing the water bills has a problem, like we have had with trying to get everybody on the same page, with, within the program, they charge us for that, but if you have not been trained by them, they will not help you.
Do you still have PC anywhere?
Pardon?
PC anywhere?
No.
You don't have that where they can come into your computer and-
Oh, yeah, they can come into our computer, but they won't help you if you haven't been trained by them. I could train, I could train anybody to do the basic part of it, but if they have a problem and I'm not around to tell them this, this, or this, then Data Tech would help them.
So like when, when Brooklyn was acting as city clerk, whether she, does she have to be trained by that, or?
I don't know how that worked, I kinda stayed out of that.
She was in tears a lot.
Yeah.
I talked to Janon, which is the woman who came out and set it all up in 95, I just talked to her at the last MFOW meeting in April, and she said, if anybody needed any help, so just let her know.
I can only, I can only repeat to you what Tina, my coach, the last time said to me.
I don't know, the people who were there, so, you know, I've been there forever, it's like.
Tina and Heidi are the two that helped me, so.
All I know is if we continue to have people complaining about their water bill being expressively high, that happens again the next several months, and I don't even know whether the meters are all being read now, every month, every one of them, are they being read?
Yes, they are.
And is the bill's gonna go out on time in September?
Well, we would hope so. Your bill did not go out on time the last two months, simply because the copy machine didn't work.
I was-
But they were ready?
Well, you know, Donna, I understand, that's a pretty feeble excuse.
Well, you call that a feeble excuse if you want to, but if you'd have been up here seeing how frustrated everybody was because we couldn't get it to work.
Donna, is there a, a copy machine in the, in the cemetery board office that maybe we could trade out if this one's not working?
No, I don't think so.
There's not, no longer any.
What do you copy, what do you copy on the bills?
The printer.
The bills are printed on the printer, you said, okay. Well, yeah.
Printers-
It does all that stuff.
I was confused.
It does all that stuff.
I know, I did it for many years.
I don't have to do my end in here.
But is there one in the cemetery, oh, there's not a-
Yes. Couldn't you say there is?
But I think David's third old one.
Okay.
Oh, the old black one?
Would there be a chance that, I mean, if something breaks down, we could, do we need to talk to the cemetery board about that?
I didn't know that was in there.
I neither.
If we got them-
I'm going there, it's going to my business.
I understand, I, I know, that's what-
Yeah.
Jason, is, is that copier on, is, is a lease agreement, or do we buy it?
That's a great question.
Because, because my question is, I don't, this is generally the way it works, they come in and they'll, I wasn't that big, but I know guys, they'll come in and say, oh, buy the copier from me, and there'll be the deal there with the service agreement and like that, and a lot of times, the ideal situation is you just call whoever sold it up, and you might have to raise your voice a little bit, but basically say, get the hell in there and get some work today.
We have tried-
It's a lease agreement.
That is a lease agreement.
Twice in the last three weeks to get the copy of the lease agreement.
Okay.
And so that's out, and how important, I'm gonna ask you flat out, how important is it necessary that the training has to be done to get the water bills right, because, I don't know, I'm hearing all kinds of things, from broke to we've got plenty of money, if you need to spend the $1,100 and you got it, it's necessary, it should get done, somebody needs to get trained.
You gotta have a clerk to train.
You don't have one now, you hired one, where is she?
Okay, that's, that's another question.
What they're asking me, you know.
The reason, the reason I ask-
What if you got a bar, have that moved on?
The reason I asked about the training, I'd be willing to come in and take you to do the training, of course, $1,100 is a lot to the city, because I'm under the belief that we're not really in great financial shape here, it's gonna cost $1,100 until we can get a clerk in, let's train a clerk, that, that's why I asked about the training. I would be willing to come in and be trained to do that, to not, I mean, I'm not gonna cost the city $1,100 training when we are gonna, when we're gonna-
I can show you how to enter everything that you need to enter.
I'm sorry, but isn't this pretty simple? Let's just have somebody run the water bills, if there's a problem, call Donna or Jane-
No, it's not simple.
Have, call Donna or Jane or somebody to come in and call the techs on the phone and get us some help. I mean, you know, I'm sitting here, I didn't get a water bill last month, mine has been messed up for over a year.
You know why you didn't get a water bill last month.
But I should have at least paid my garbage, correct? Should I have not paid my garbage? Am I gonna get a $200 garbage bill at some point? I mean, we've gotta figure out a way to straighten things out, so, we hear a lot of excuses, but let's brainstorm how to fix it.
That's what we're working on, but why spend $1,100 on one person who's only gonna be there temporarily, and turn around two months later and spend another $1,100 to train another person?
That's why I'm saying don't.
It's $80 an hour just to call them on the phone and have them talk to you.
That's why I'm saying don't, use Donna, she's been trained, if, you know, she can come in for a minute to get on the phone with them, or if Jane would-
And that's good, but we gotta have somebody to put there first.
But they don't have to have the training to do it, they have to have the training if there's a problem.
I know, no, you still have to have training just to run.
But Donna says she can train them.
I, I understand.
Jason, you brought up why are we waiting till next month?
That's, we gotta have a clerk to put in there, we don't have one.
Absolutely, that's a good point.
And the one we hired is now gonna quit, she's down to two days a week.
We oughta be working on that, getting a replacement right away.
You have to advertise.
And get her trained, she's been living at her large trainer on that.
I think that's what Bill said, that we didn't word it right in the agenda, that's why we cannot, that's why we can't put them in that position tonight.
But you don't have to wait a month.
You don't have to wait a month, you're right, we could have another special session, and if you feel the need to have another special session, we can do it.
All right, just maybe wanna make my statement here, I have to take my wages to pay as a councilman, I'm gonna donate it back to this city, because I'm not doing this for any financial gain for myself, I'll tell everybody here.
I'm doing the same thing.
Understand?
I will donate mine back.
Thank everybody. We realize there are problems.
You have to accept that you can give it back.
You have to make the check out.
You have to pay before you can get it back.
Right.
I, I can give a donation to this city tomorrow if I was, had, you know, not part of my way, but I will make a donation, a minimum of what my salary is here, I guarantee you, and it may be more.
But, there, I, I don't know, and I'm frustrated tonight, because we've been making some gains, and today, we might have lost a little of it, I'd like to see where we can sit down, and I understand the situation, it's rushing stuff through, it's, it needs to be talked about, and I don't know whether, and I don't even know in a special meeting, or some of us would like just a, just a citizens' meeting some night, where everybody can come in and just start hashing some of this stuff out, but the last, especially the last three months, I feel like we've made some gains, and I'll tell you exactly what I told the guy the other day, three months ago, and I, in my opinion, don't mean squat, I was 97% sure we'd end up unincorporated, right now, I'm sitting at about 80%, and we'll know a little more next month when Tid comes up, I'd like to see some of this stuff just slow down a little bit.
I don't know.
It's supposed to be here on Sept- on the September 11th.
Kevin, I'd like to interject something here, I've heard before that we kept tabling things, so.
What I'm saying now, and I'll ask a pointed question, if I told somebody today at the city to write me a check for $5,000, can I take it down south to Tomo Bank, and will it clear?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got at least 5,000.
I think like-
Does that count when we pay Chad Lefler?
Seven thousand.
Jason, does that count when we write a check to Chad Lefler? Does that count when you guys at the fire department get paid back like you should? That's the, that's the point I'm trying to make, I, I, I've heard some of the stuff going on, and I know, I know what I'm being told, and I talked to him again today, this afternoon, I think we got some problems financially, and it's gonna come to the point, and maybe he's done, there's gonna have to be some audits running, I mean, there's nothing, and if, if I petition the auditor at the council motion or not, if we all know what's gonna happen, the city will go bust, and this, I guess what I'm getting at, we made some gains three months, I think most of us in here feel that way, I think we took a step back today, and I'm not gonna get into reasons why, I think everybody knows, but we gotta slow this start thing down, we gotta start working together for, that's, for what it's worth, that's my opinion, and I, I'm trying to be peaceful tonight, and, you know, we made some facts, but it's, everything I've seen is, and everything I've seen since for a long time, we're in a problem.
Here, here's the deal, years back, if everybody remembers, cemetery was negative, the library was negative, I mean, every flipping department in the city was negative, except for the city government. The reason that was, is because at the end of the year, the city government would take back what money it allocated to these departments that they didn't use.
I know, basically, I'll say they should have money for the department.
And that went back positive, don't shake your head no, because it's in the paperwork and I've seen it.
No, I'm not shaking my head no about that.
Okay, well, you should give them a note.
You don't take money back at the end of the year, just because that money's put in the budget.
It was transferred.
It was transferred, it was transferred.
It was transferred.
And transferred back.
I, I've heard said that it was, it was said by somebody that they didn't do-
But what that said, then, it was made to where the departments were keeping their money to get them back positive. The city then started taking on the debt that was actually out there.
That is city debt, doesn't matter if it's a library.
I understand that, but I'm saying, city government versus library, those are all separate.
You mean general government, is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about city government period.
There's, there's multiple resolutions out there where money was taken from one fund and transferred into general. So general would look good at the end of the year, but in the meantime, other funds were being depleted.
Well, that's totally illegal.
Yeah, that's probably the matter.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, no, it hasn't.
Yeah, it was, before I took on this, that's how it was done.
There's, there's, yes, and the crazy is.
It wasn't done when I was sitting up there, I guarantee you that.
I'm not saying it was.
Your name's not on any of them.
But I'm just saying that's how it was done.
You can have it spread within the fund, within the program. Do you guys all know what the programs are?
It's, yes, it's all taken care of.
And what the funds are in each program?
Oh, we don't know the funds, Ted Nelson's taking care of it.
Well, that could be figured out in a short period.
Well, that's what we thought. Now, can I finish, please?
Well, yeah, I didn't know you wanted to talk, I thought.
No, it wasn't done yet. Anyways, that was taken care of. The city then took on the debt, the general fund, or general city. Now, you have the fire department that is no longer with the city. That was money which also, fire tax, is allocated for fire department only.
Right.
Cannot be used anywhere else.
I know that.
Looking back over the years, there is a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of fire tax that was never paid to the fire department. Because the fire department would get paid eighteen thousand dollar budget, and then the city would take it back and use it for whatever they want at the end of the year.
Where did the fire department, I've never seen the fire department, the line item with two hundred thousand dollars in it, never.
Well, it wasn't two hundred thousand in it, I'm just saying over the years, it's accumulated.
How much the townships paid that they would go after?
I know, I used to deposit those checks, but there was never any of that, that kind of amount.
Well, I'm not saying it was that amount, I'm saying that's an accumulation over the, over the years. But now the fire department is no longer with the city. So that money is no longer in the general fund, which was, what we've come to find out is around thirty-some thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars a year that the fire department was, well, the city was being paid for the fire department, but the fire department was only getting budgeted for twenty thousand.
By who?
By the city, by council.
By council.
By.
The fire department is a separate line item.
Yes, it is.
And it doesn't get mixed with anything else.
But it did.
So when audits come through, if they ever do, we're gonna find out that all the city street money went to the fire department when it should have went to the city streets.
No, you'll never know. I don't know.
That's totally different.
For as smart as you think you are, in two thousand and thirteen, things went pretty darn slow and pr- that, is that not what we're being audited for? I don't like how you're sitting up there just like you're smarter than everybody else and got this all figured out, and I don't think you do. I almost think you're halfway crooked back in the day, if everything ever comes out.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I really do.
You should be careful what you say here.
Are you, well, are you accusing me of being crooked?
I'm not accusing you of anything.
Are you accusing me of taking money from the city?
I'm not accusing you of anything, but it's like how you said.
Because if you are, that's a million dollar lawsuit right there.
Yeah, well, I'm not accusing you.
Yes, you are.
You have a kinda like the, the tone of even like how you're treating Jane, I think too, is part of it.
Because Jane doesn't give anybody a chance to talk. Jane talks, 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 talks.
My heart is breaking because of the condition.
So I was, I'm trying to explain what has been happening.
You don't have to explain anything to me.
There's other people who have seen the paperwork in the city hall of past budgets, and where money has went, and where money got taken from. And people who got overpaid and everything like that.
So when are you saying this started then? Is that gonna come out in the thirteen audit or?
No, because the thirteen audit only takes thirteen.
Okay, so should we, should we, when do we need audits? I'm, I'm gonna, maybe add you just a little bit.
I think, if the city had the money, it needs to be audited from at least two thousand five to present.
There was an audit.
It was.
There was an audit in twenty eleven.
Not in two, not from two thousand five to two thousand twelve, this was never audited.
Twenty eleven was audited, Jason.
Yeah, the eleventh was audited.
Twenty eleven was audited.
Six months.
Can I ask Cookie a question, please? Well, I'll try and not make it too hard for you. Am I understanding this right, that you and Paul Wilson, in your capacity on the cemetery board, had to have fundraising events to raise money because there was no money in the cemetery fund at some point in time, I don't care what year, but is that somewhat true?
We had one dinner. And it was complained about, and we did have it, that there was too many dinners, so we didn't have anymore. But we weren't out of money, we were just trying to get more money to fix up old stones. And when Ed Abay donated five thousand dollars to the cemetery, that's what we used that to fix old stones up. And we haven't fixed any since then. And I don't think you should have to have anything for to have, make money for the cemetery. And I wouldn't do it anymore, and I don't know if the rest of them would, they never talked about it anymore.
And I know some of those resolutions were taking money from the cemetery and putting it in the debt.
No, I know.
And I've got two questions to ask. Number one, I've heard that the audit results are back and that you have it, and that you're supposed to review. I've heard it's been back a month, you're supposed to review it, get it back to them before they can publish it. That's the first question. Second question is, why do you have a council member sitting here tonight who was never notified of this meeting until I and Brian went to Heidi today and told him there was a meeting?
That was my fault.
Well, it's still the.
You let me talk a minute. We always let you speak until you're ready to quit. That was my fault. We were having a breakdown of communication up here because two people were talking one way and one was talking another. I thought he had been informed, and then I found out this afternoon that he had not. And I am taking the blame for that.
Donna, I understand.
Honestly, that is.
This guy wasn't, this guy wasn't informed meeting.
Honestly, that is for the councilperson themselves to take up with whoever was supposed to notify.
Yeah, I understand that, Jason, it's just that, uh.
Until I found out, Jason.
There seemed to be a lot of errors being done by Donna, and I didn't know correctly.
It's not my job to do that.
Until, until I was found out that he was notified, I wasn't very happy.
When you get right down to the nits and grits, it was not my job to tell him either, I am not the city.
That's what, and I don't see why you're taking on all these other things, and you're not being paid for.
You wanna get a water bill? No, you don't get a water bill, you live in one of the apartments, but somebody has to step up and do it.
Believe me.
Well, I think we better just adjourn.
Anyways, I was trying to explain why our account looks so in our way. Because the water and sewer is the one sucking up all the debt. We don't have the fire department funds in there anymore to boost that. So that's, all I was trying to do is explain why our account looks like it does. And yes, the city has got to find out a way to start cutting spending. The city's spending the exact same as it has for the last twelve years. Except with one exception, one thousand dollars more goes to the cemetery than what it used to. Other than that, the budget has been almost exactly to the penny for the last twelve years. All that's different is that the debt was taken from the individual departments and put into the city. And the fire department's gone, so that's why it looks like the way it does.
There'll be no more money from the townships coming into the city of Leixburg.
No.
That's, that much less we got to work with, and we shouldn't have been working with it the way we were, but it's water under, it's water over the bridge now.
Supposed to, yes, it is.
Well, Jason, is that, is that, you being by yourself out there now in the city, is that working out pretty good?
Oh, yeah.
Financial for you through the, so Jake, you have what the other?
Fire department's flustered because we, we find out, found out we have money that we never had. That we weren't supposed, that we weren't getting, that we were supposed to be getting.
Plus something else, the people that are actually supporting that fire department now have a vote and a person on that board. So it's a way more democratic deal than it was when the city had it. And I don't think, everybody hate to see the fire department go as part of our identity, but the way things are going, I don't think we could afford to, to keep it.
I thought they made a smart move when they went, I really did, and I think I know some of the reasons you did. Really, I'm still feeling that way, we need to get somewhere sometime where we can just talk, if you understand what I'm saying. It, it's heated.
Before you adjourn, I think you should reconsider the position of the city clerk. If you lose Mary because she doesn't have help for another month, and if you lose the help from the agency, you guys are right back to square zero. I don't think that is in the best interest of the city.
But when they listed it on the paperwork as a deputy clerk position, I think they would have to.
I understand that, I understand. I understand that, but you can turn around and you can have another special meeting tomorrow night if you want. You just post it properly then.
This, this city went without clerks for months in time, and I know it caused a lot of problem. I, I'm uncomfortable with this rush.
Cause at the same time, we wanna have somebody that's got some knowledge or some background.
Mary walks out now and this city's in dire straits.
We've been, I guess, in dire straits for quite a while.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be any better either.
I think we talked about that, haven't we?
Well, Bob, you know my frustrations, and it's kinda what Jason's saying with the, I, I think he's right, I talk to some of the guys. I, I'm still jumbling all this stuff through my head, but my whole problem is, if it's been going, why'd it keep going on for so long? You know, if, you know, I'm gonna say the name, under the Henshaw administration, everybody knew what was going on, I mean, you guys, no consent agenda, it's nothing. And it just goes on and on, and nobody stepped up to stop it. And that's what frustrates me so much, just, just one person saying, enough. And, and now you're talking about, I knew some of that, where library funds and stuff run over the cities, I've heard a little bit, it's not right. And, but why did everybody let it keep going? I mean, I, I would expect somebody on the council or somebody in some position to say, in a meeting sometime, and I know they're gonna buck everybody, to say, this isn't right, we need to stop today. And that's, and Bob knows, that's what I've been fighting about for the last two years, and I just, nothing. Jason knows how frustrated I've been. I mean, this stuff, this, this isn't, this is a long drawn issue. And, and I do, I expect somebody we elect to set up at the council, when they know something's wrong, to say something about it.
But the council members don't always know something's wrong.
I know, I, I know a lot of things.
You can't expect all of them to know every single thing about the finances of the city. That's the city clerk's job, to know what's going on. They should be getting a, a financial report every month of every fund, every line item. You should have what's left in your budget of every account. Now's a good time to start that because it all starts over July one.
And that's exactly what Mary is working on.
And it should be done on home rule forms, not on some made up computer thing. Because the law says that, since home rule went into effect, you have special ledgers, special posting cards. So any city clerk can walk into your office and help you out. That, I mean, that's what I do for the league. I can walk into any office and help them out because everybody has the same accounting system.
And step, one step further, back to agency, they've got some paper ledgers in conjunction with the computer.
Right.
And it should be so anybody can walk in and see what position this city is in, good, bad, or indifferent.
That's what I'm saying, everybody should be using the same.
Here's an example of my frustration, though. Public information request, and again, to the administration, you might as well just set them on fire. I mean, no response at all, I was requesting fund balances for months, nothing, nothing. And then, and you heard the challenge I gave him that night in the meeting, Bill, do you have, does Bernie always have everything he needs? This is why we're in trouble, and yeah, he does, yeah, he does, yeah, he does, three times. And a week later, Mr. Always says, I've got no information to do this because the city didn't have it, and we almost went over the cliff on the AFR. That's what I'm frustrated about, because when I got a mayor sitting up there basically lying to me, and I'm just gonna use that word, there's a problem. And, you know, and I'm, I, again, I'm not gonna apologize, I'm wrong on some of this stuff, and I'm changing my mind once in a while. This has been going on way too long, and now we're hopefully coming together, and we're gonna get a handle on this, but we're, I don't know. Like I said, I talked to Ted again this afternoon, I, we'll see what's going on.
Kevin, Mary is working diligently to get the numbers down.
And I'm arguing that with you, I'm in agreement on that. The only question I got now, though, Mary is a clerk, right? Mary is our city clerk, right?
Yes, yes.
At this point in time, okay.
Yes.
Okay, but, yeah, I'm just gonna voice my frustration, Bob, now Bob and I really, we, I had to stop talking to him and talking to my friend for a while, I was so damn mad. But it, it just, especially the last two years, and I mean, and I, I talked to her, I didn't dislike her, I was extremely critical of her toward the end. How in the hell can we tolerate a clerk not coming to work? And then, and then I need to say blame her, she should have been fired or mentored. And it just, I don't know the reasons for it.
What's your argument with that?
Yeah, I know, I, but I'm trying to figure out the reasons, cause I'm just watching it go farther and farther and farther down, and everybody's just walking around. I seen Jason nod his head on a couple of things, I said thank you for agreeing with me. It was bad back then, you couldn't get nothing found out. I don't know how bad it really is.
Don't you feel like now we've got a little bit more leadership sitting up here around this table than we did before?
The last three months, I think we're turning, I really do, and so let's, let's see what happens. You and I had a dialogue the other day, and I don't know, but I'll disagree when I think I should, but I'm willing to change my mind to somebody who throws some numbers at me that I agree with.
We're trying to agree together, Kevin.
Well, you got an answer right here sitting in this room, and you won't consider Jane Underwood as your clerk, and I think they're making a big mistake.
But she was one of the.
She said she would help.
I consult with lots of cities, and, and I heard on the tape the other night that Donna said that Cindy would never work with me. I called Cindy after I heard that.
I didn't say Cindy.
You didn't say Cindy, you said.
I didn't name any names at all, Jane.
Oh, well, I had several people say that.
We get help from people other than Cindy.
Okay, okay. Who else, Cindy and Mary and?
I talked to two people today at the state, and the biggest problem, one of the biggest problems in every little city in the state of Iowa is finding a competent clerk and retaining them, and there's your problem, there's not enough money paid for them. They're expected to do everything, it's like being a cop, they've gotta be a psychiatrist, a lawyer, you know, like that, and there's not enough remuneration for them, and it's, it's a huge problem, and, and I don't think that we're gonna, I don't know where we're gonna go, how are you gonna retain a good clerk?
And now you're putting your current clerk, who has done so much good for the city, in a position of only being able to work two days a week, and not getting her the help she needs.
That was her choice.
They have a choice up here, they can remedy that situation.
Now, Bill, schedule's a meeting?
You know what, it doesn't take four days a week to do this job. I'm sorry.
This is the only thing. It's in right now and.
Well, there's no reason for it to be in that shape.
We all agree on that.
Yeah.
I mean, we all agree on that.
I know that.
What's happened the last two years is just completely set this town back.
There's so many things that's happened that you people didn't even realize, cause we had our hands tied. I was a councilperson, and I became the mayor pro temp, which I didn't particularly want.
Which then you asked me for help, and then I didn't hear anything, and also, I figured somebody talked me out.
And there's a reason for that, too.
I know that, I know who they are.
It, uh, no, no, that's not what it is. But if you guys don't know at all what was going on, we couldn't do anything. We had a clerk that had our hands tied, we could not do anything, couldn't even fire her.
I thought she quit.
She did after I got elected to it, cause she knew what was gonna happen.
Why, why, why couldn't she have invited?
I would be, can't tell you.
Bill, if you didn't wanna be pro temp mayor, why did you run for mayor then?
Just on account of the way things was going, and the only way we was gonna get opened up up here.
Well, I got news for you, I don't, I think you're, I think going forward, it sure doesn't look good right now.
I'm glad they optimism in this town.
There's nothing to change here from running.
Yeah, I, I'm smart enough not to, Donna, and you're one of the big problems here right now tonight.
You think so?
Yes, absolutely.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Let's calm down a little bit, I'm just trying to get a giddy.
Yeah, let's, let's get on with something to do with the city. Tearing people down, don't never get you out. We all got our faults, one way or another.
I get off at four thirty, but Monday night and Tuesday night are both good.
About tomorrow night.
Sunday night I go get my.
I'm saying come up Sunday morning. Bob, where are you going back?
Work seven to five Sunday.
I can adjust my schedule.
You work seven to five?
You get a break at seven o'clock? You get a break at seven o'clock?
Seven, five.
Seven, one to five.
I'll be down from Missouri at seven o'clock.
Sorry, cause somebody's gonna treat you.
Nine o'clock tomorrow night's a good time.
I'll be in the deal tomorrow, definitely.
You're, you're a visiting man.
Fine, yeah. That's what happens, you know, two teenage kids. Wednesday is the earliest.
Unless they're turning, they're not gonna be helping.
I'm not when everybody can hear you, so that's a communication thing. I said, when I found out, when I thought I was the only one, I was a little upset.
Mary should have been the one calling people.
Maybe Jason can check into that, maybe it wouldn't cost eleven hundred dollars for him to help out with that stuff, so. Like, if he wants you, Jason, that'd be great if he checked.
But he's willing to train with Donna, I think that's awesome.
Well, they train more than one at the same place. So six, three people, you're only on for eleven hundred bucks.
That might be something to think about. Tuesday, August five, eleven.
Okay.
I said Wednesday's the earliest.
Wednesday. You have your cell phone with you up there?
I can, I've got regular phone, but.
Okay, cause you can be on, you can attend the meeting by phone. Can I make a motion, we have a special meeting on Wednesday, August twenty-third at seven P.
Can I make a motion? We have a special meeting on Wednesday, August twenty-third at seven P.M.
You need a motion to start with?
She made a motion.
She made it, yeah. Well, actually, you can't even make a motion, because it's not on the agenda. We just decided to do it.
We just decided. All right, we got a motion and a second inning out. Okay.
That is Wednesday.
Wednesday the twenty-third. Around here, you've gotta do three times more than you need to.
And then check, and recheck, and then recheck again on the agenda. Make sure it's supported, right?
Seven P.M.
Seven P.M.
P.M.
So are you guys basically just gonna go with some of the applications that were still on file, even though it was posted as a full-time post position? We can't...
To hire a helper, you don't have to publish it.
You don't?
No.
Who told you that?
The attorney on Wednesday.
That's a city employee, right?
Yes.
All right, now, if the clerk leaves, what happens then?
It doesn't have to be one...
Then it'll be readdressed, right?
Go through the application process and all that again?
Of course, we're gonna have to do it anyways.
I'm trying to get that in my head. So when the clerk leaves, it will be readdressed about the hiring of a full-time clerk, right?
Actually, my feeling is, is we get the helper in and get going. And in that time, before the time that we are reposting and looking for a new clerk, full-time clerk. So the helpers, and if that helper applies, you know, then good. If not, well, but...
And that's a good idea, because the sooner you get your ads out that you're looking for full-time, the more opportunity for better applicants.
Exactly. And so the helper is just gonna fill that void until we get a full-time clerk hired.
Is Chris Johnson still interested?
Now, is the helper, is the helper willing to be compensated, and how will the helper be compensated?
I was hoping to ask Mary where she's been the percent of her salary the helper gets. You know, is it eighty percent, seven, you know? Mary, Arnold should have some idea, shouldn't she? She's been a clerk and been a city councilwoman there.
It might not. I mean, it's the same, it's the same.
That's the way I thought it would be, the same, what she did and the same.
Now, what, uh, okay. Are we just...
But there's no benefits or nothing.
Are we posting the full-time position then immediately, and going to go through that process?
We have to.
Okay.
Patty, she has certain things that she has started that she would like to...
Like to finish.
Yeah. Carry it through.
And I'm fine with that from my hand. I mean, the office already looks a hundred times better than what it did.
I'm sorry, Bill, we can pray for you. So are you posting the full-time job now, or are you waiting until Mary arrives?
No, he's like it.
So what we need from Mary is a hard resignation date?
Yes. And at that point, then you'll post for the full-time?
Full-time position. But we need to get Mary out down and find out when her final date is. Now, she's going to, I mean, like I said, the road use, that's due September one or September thirty? Which one is it? September thirty. So that's one that, I mean, I would...
The road use. February four.
Yes.
It's the one that got all that stuff last year.
Right, that one. And then we also have, the AFR's gotta be done.
December first.
December first.
But I'd like to back up on that. We got a lot of help from Ted Nelson last year to get all this done. And he expressed to me that he would like to see us way ahead of that deadline this year. I haven't talked to him lately. I've kinda been holding off, because I've been out of the loop.
If we had actual numbers and stuff, what the accounts actually, where you could do the AFR map.
Yeah, yeah. And she's getting all the quotes.
Well, if you have all the numbers for your road use tax report, it could be thrown together in a half hour. I've already submitted mine.
If I understand the road use report right, and I was telling Jason, I've got this memorized, if it's not up by September thirtieth, the worst thing will happen. Until December thirtieth, the state will withhold the funds. So I mean, it's not like somebody's gonna shoot you a cannon at us.
Yeah.
You know, they'll just withhold. So there's always a little leeway there. The mayor will get a letter or whatever, but...
Yeah, I'd rather it not come.
Yeah, I really have, but two, I'm just wondering, from what I'm hearing, she's probably getting some numbers. I was concerned, because I asked a question a while back, "Does anybody know where the road use money went?" So I've got in my head, well, do we have any numbers to fill the report out? We don't even know where the deposit money was spent.
Do we have, for the office helper, kind of a job description? Or is she gonna be up here by herself, or does she have to be here with Mary, now, Mary?
No, she can be here on her own.
The job description will need to be developed.
Yeah, and there's only certain things that helper will be actually privy to, I guess you can say. Like banking accounts and checks and stuff, no. They can't write checks or anything. That's still a clerk. Access to, like, the vault or whatever, I believe that would be a no.
But I mean, I didn't know if you guys had had an opportunity as a group to address what type of things, so that's good to know.
And if Mary's leaving, and we don't know when, to me, it doesn't make sense to wait to post that full-time job. Why not go ahead and do it now? Last time you posted, that ad was run for several weeks before you even considered it. So if she says, "September first, oh, I'm sorry, but, you know, I got a lead for my other job, and I'm not gonna do it."
They just said that they were gonna reach out to her and ask her for a call.
Final, get a final date.
And then that way, they can have everything in place when she's done.
And she said for sure she won't work those two days for a while.
Yeah, she starts at the two...
Another letter she wrote out was that, as of Monday, I think it is.
She's saying what, two days?
She will be gone the three days. She will be there.
Tuesday and Thursday.
So she has designed any shape or form for two days, helping us. And she didn't give a date when she was thinking about it?
No, that's what I said. We need to get a final date so we can post the permanent position.
And I think we need to post something on the door stating that she's gonna be here Tuesday and Thursday.
She did on her resignation letter, such as it was, indicated to her, I think, five areas that she's been working really hard on, and she's in the middle of, and that's her challenge, and she would like to finish them.
But I think what Jason was saying is to make sure that you've got the appropriate days on the door, that the city clerk will be here.
I'll take care of that in the morning. No, I'm not gonna do it in the morning. I'll put Monday.
Days and times.
She'll be here on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Eight to four, I think it said on the letter.
And I'll...
Can she push one of those back to five or so, maybe, to get some of the people that...
What's in it, if necessary, if she could even be more hours on certain days, like be here later, if it's something...
She's really going to work with us.
Is she saying that she wants to leave? She doesn't want to do the two days, say, six months from now, or a year, or anything?
She'd never say it.
And that's something that we need to be able to... And see, that wouldn't necessarily be acceptable if she wanted to do that for six months or a year.
No.
To get us through the, these big paper, the big...
Get us through all the E.T.s we've got up right now.
The AFRs, the road use, get that stuff filed, and then...
Yeah, say, she says she's gonna be here till December, then we make sure we put everything in a timeline to the point that we are hiring somebody by the end of November.
Yeah, and we can enjoy it at the time if we know.
And that way, they can train with her.
Because it has to be posted for ten days. We have to have someone to respond.
Well, I mean, we want somebody here that's gonna be able to train with her as well.
Absolutely.
Because she's obviously gonna probably do things a little differently than, say, you or I or Jason would do it.
I just think it's important, I mean, obviously, there's been lots of mistakes in the past, you know, whoever made them, whoever. But I think it's important when we're, we really put our heads together and try to do things correctly from here. So I mean, even like Mary, love the woman to death, known her for years, but, I mean, have we talked to her? You know, have you guys talked about her salary and stuff? You know, is she, what are we gonna pay her? I mean, is she full-time, part-time? I mean, have all those questions been answered? Because, I mean, yeah, we don't want the city in trouble, and I think sometimes things...
It's not gonna cost the city anymore than what it is the way it is right now.
No, I'm just saying, like, she was hired under a full-time job, but that job description, I think it's important when you get two people kind of sharing a role, you know, that she knows her responsibilities, and the new one knows hers, or his, I guess not to be sexist, because...
I asked them if they had a job description for the office helper.
But then even hers will change, is what I'm saying. I mean, there's just a lot to it. All I'm asking is, do you guys want to sit up there? Just, I don't, but, you know, just to make sure all the t's are crossed and the i's are got it, and all I'm asking for. Yeah, I don't think that's happened in the past, and I think that's Kevin's frustration, and...
No, my number one thing is that we only have one person writing checks, because you don't want somebody to accidentally write another check or whatever, so it's, that's my big thing. And the less people that have access to all that, the better off you are, I think. A lot less mistakes.
I think that's great, but having them writing to the city, I think is...
Yeah, I agree.
Well, because of that bond, we gotta do some things for that, and that'd probably be by resolution. To get that in bond, they need two people signing checks now. And there's a backup person. And then somebody else has to go reconcile the books every month. And that person cannot sign checks. So there's a total separation there of responsibilities. And that came when we got the bond from the insurance company.
Anybody wants another reason for that, just go home and Google "Delhi, Iowa," and read that out.
I mean, I don't think our city can handle much more problems than it can avoid any.
No city clerk should be the only person in their books.
No.
They should be audited by somebody else, even an internal audit. I'm not saying it has to be a seven thousand dollar audit.
Yeah, that's what he was just calling out.
That's what he just said.
I'm saying, you're right.
Somebody on the council.
Well, I don't know if the council would understand all the bookkeeping.
Well, we'll have to learn.
Well, then you could be the city clerk, right?
No.
We don't want the job.
Council can't be, council person can't be paid for.
I'm trying, since I've gotten involved here, I'm trying to learn as much as I can about it.
Well, that's good.
Hey, clear up something, Jason. I'm probably throwing you into a basket of mayors that's done a poor job, you know? It bothers me that the streets have gone so bad so long, and it's not, it's more than two years.
I understand.
And water bills let go, I mean, man, there's just no, that's a lot of a problem, just... I don't think people realize. I knew Dave well, and I knew there was a lot of water bills owed a long time ago. He's gone now. I mean, if it's a label for me to know that, it's a bill, but, but, uh, that just frustrates me that there's a lot of...
I understand. Yeah, it's easy for you motions to get involved, and...
So I have a question.
Temper's get high and...
Are you done?
Yes.
So I have a question. Why did you quit certifying delinquent bills? I did that for years up here. Somebody didn't pay after the ninety days. They were certified to taxes.
Actually, it's not in our current ordinance.
Well, it doesn't have to be, and that's just a way to handle it.
I know it doesn't have to be, but I couldn't tell you why.
If you just passed that, the thing you just passed, and not as an amendment, you can do that, believe me.
I'm just saying, I don't know. It used to be done that way. You're right.
It's just, yeah.
It was done that way two and a half years ago.
I was gonna say, you sent out the notices, right? When somebody was delinquent as a city clerk, when they were there.
And if they didn't pay, we followed the ordinance to the T. They'll give him all around if he didn't...
Some cities...
Brad would come in and tell me...
The water bill had to be turned in by the fifteen, or fourteen, by the end of fourteen, but the bills were set on the fifteen.
No, the bills were set on the first.
And they reduce the ten.
There's still a due process that you have to go through before you can hit the taxes like that.
No, you just have to do, the council has to do a resolution approving for the clerk to certify the taxes.
There's a process in the ordinance book, Jane.
Well, the ordinance book hasn't been right on anything else, so I...
Yeah, it's not even right on the amounts of charge.
That's what I said, Patty. I say you give them the ninety days, or whatever your ordinance says, and then you go to the certification process with the resolution.
Well, I know for a fact that back in two thousands, early ten, before the two thousand and ten, it wasn't followed the right way, because we were late five days and our water got shut off. Because it was during unemployment at Deer, and our checks get delayed when you go on shutdown. And I was five days late and had to pay a hundred and fifty dollars to get the dang thing turned back on.
So I think it goes back to what Bob was saying, you know, have to treat everybody the same.
I think I saw some...
We start right now with square one.
Legal aid, that there is a, there's always a way to do that.
Unemployment, they do. No, but unemployment office does. And when you have an H.R. guy like John Roll, if he doesn't recheck your addresses after you've moved. Anyways.
Thank you, Jason. Very much.
I made a motion, major.
I thought you did.
They never got a second.
Motion in seconds, doesn't...
Sure.